Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Elaine followed by Don. Discussion?
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
So, he adopted this amended capital project budget on December fifth, two thousand and twenty-three for the seen total that's presented here. So, is the difference in this motion, the amended contract with Wendell? And if so, or maybe not, it's so, I'm just, you know, it's a conjunction. Are we still anticipating coming in under budget?
The budget is the same as you pointed out. That has not changed. The contract increase with Wendell hasn't affected the overall project budget. We're still anticipating coming in under budget.
Okay, excellent, thank you.
Further discussion, Don?
I have a question about the serial lawns. What's the length and the annual payments?
Jenny?
We will not get that until we find out what the interest rate is. And the determination of the term will be based on the various projects. So, depending on what we borrow for, for example, streets will have a ten to a fifteen-year life. The building may have a thirty-year life. Parking lot may have a ten-year life. And what bond council does is they take all of the projects that were going to be financed, and they will aggregate them to come up with what the term of the bond can be. So, I'm anticipating the bond to be between fifteen to twenty-five years, probably, even on the rate. And if we go right now for the seven point five million, if we go thirty years with that, the estimate is about five hundred thousand dollars. However, with the savings, if the project actually does come under budget, the savings will be realized in what we issue the bonds. So, I'm hoping that we're not going to issue the seven point five million.
Thank you.
Lynn?
Susan, within the letter that you gave to the council, you said that your estimate to be about three million sixty thousand plus reversible expenses. Approximately how much are those and are those capped?
We have to go back and look and see where our spreadsheet said. I think we estimated based on the September completion. If we finish early, the cost is less. And it's basically send days on site. So, it's like, you know, it's a bit of a, you pay direct expenses. So, we give you, we see, I think it's reimbursed. It's out of lump sum where, like, we just get paid money, whether we spend money or not, which is sometimes the case, sometimes not. So, it's a little hard for me to say that, but, you don't have that with you yet.
I don't have that, I don't know if we have that number or not.
Wait, hundred, two hundred?
It's on our, on our invoice. Yeah.
Jenny?
The latest invoice, the third one, I believe the reimbursement was estimated around fifteen thousand dollars.
Fifty thousand? Thank you, Jen.
It's not usually a huge number.
Additional discussion?
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Yes.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forster Rothbart?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
And again, thank you very much for spending your time with us. We'll move on to motion seventeen. Motion that the common council will continue to follow the standard code of parliamentary procedure for meetings for the common council for the year two thousand and twenty-five. Do I have a motion to approve? I've got Elaine followed by Cecilia. And discussion of this? Have we, discussion of this? Yes, please, Cecilia.
I was gonna just say, I repeat what I said earlier. We had a discussion of this in our finance meeting, and there were several suggestions in terms of if we wanted to revise this, the use of this particular manual. There is, there are certain pathways we could take. And so, we thought it would be advantageous to have a discussion with council about those potential pathways.
Great, so this is our opportunity. Thank you, Cecilia.
I just wanted to add, I think, Cecilia, it can be done at any time during the course of the year.
Yep, yep.
Yes.
Did, when you discussed it, did you guys have, like, talks about process? About how we would go about discussing and revising it, timeline, that sort of thing?
No, just that we had talked about, you know, potentially learning more and discussing it in a smaller group at the legislative committee and then bringing some recommendations to council. Because we can modify our procedures at any time. And so, we wanted to look at, like, what other, like, we are already looking at some of the broader policies of other municipalities, things we may want to adopt that we might be able to incorporate this type of thing into that discussion as well. And then come with some recommendations.
That certainly, certainly does seem like the logical next step would be for the legislative to be considering this and bringing forward recommendations to the council for discussion that are a little bit more specific. We could do this or we could do that. Yes, Cecilia?
Yeah, just to draw on Don's point, that we can, at any point we learned, we can adopt this particular manual that we've been using. And then another point, updating for our own, whatever we want to, whatever we choose.
Right, and then the next council can throw it away and use the book if they want to.
The other point I was gonna say is that I believe we've talked about NICOM having potential trading.
NICOM and Committee on Open Government.
That could be a source of educating ourselves about, you know, updating the procedures. So, looking into that.
That's online or is that something we have to set up?
They're both online, and the Committee on Open Government is, Kristen O'Neil wants to come and drill in person. There's one in-person section.
So, I could see a scenario in which the legislative committee might have several recommendations and maybe a presentation that would be the video, if that's what it is, of NICOM for the entire council's edification, you know, as part of that process. Or it might be a sequence of different presentations by the legislative. Is that, for those who are on the legislative committee, does that make some sort of sense?
We can take a look at it.
All right, so then we, you guys are still engaged in discussion of this motion, unless we have reached the end of that discussion.
I'll just say what I said at the, if that's okay?
Of course.
I'll just say what I said at the meeting, which is that because we intend to re-adopt this book, that I think that it would really benefit all of us to read it. It's like a really short read. Because I think that the more familiar that we get with it, just the better. Just read it, please.
Yeah, I mean, we talked about sort of what could we put into place for all of us to ensure that we read it, so that there's not enormous incentive to read this book. So, you know, we didn't come up with necessarily incentives to read it. But nevertheless, it does seem like it's a vital component to our meeting processes.
We're gonna get a pop quiz?
The main...
I mean, that's my default.
You just can't keep it.
I think the main reservation that I have with this is that every year that I've been on council, we have voted to follow this, and I don't know that any of us have ever read it. And so, our rules can vary from meeting to meeting, depending on various things. And I don't know that that benefits us as an organization. So, that's, I would like us to either read the book and say, yeah, this is good, and we'll do it, or say, you know, maybe we don't love this particular thing, so we're gonna do it differently.
So, homework assignment for the council and the mayor is to...
We talked about that at the meeting.
I know, I'm aware.
It is for the mayor to read it as well.
Yes, so homework assignment for the council and the mayor would be to, let's read the book all the way through. And then concurrently, that the legislative committee will begin conversations around what modifications they might want to bring to council. And we may have, within the context of all that, maybe also concurrent to some presentation, a video for the entire council by way of NICOM. Potentially. Yes, Scott?
I think some of it too is consistency, not just from what the council is, but down to our committees, down to our boards of public, our boards, like, this is what we were stopped at. This is what we follow. And make sure that we're consistent down through. And that our boards know that's, you know, and maybe they need to have a copy of the book too, so they know what they're following. That's what we're worried about, is like the consistency, like, making sure we're all consistent across.
That's a good point. So, if there's, yes, Mike?
I'd say if you want to move that direction, then we need to include, like, board chairs in a training.
So, if I may, just what, I just wanted to make sure that our city attorneys and housekeeping that would like to say beforehand, because I saw you had your copy, and it's, like, well-loved.
I, I, I'd say, I'd read the agenda, sort of, where the standard code of parliamentary procedure is, is the second, second to the massive Robert rules, is the one that chooses most, like, most organizations most widely, for the most applications in the United States. There are others, that if there are other city council proposals and procedures, the only thing you have to be careful about is, is making sure that whatever you do, whatever modifications you make to this, whatever you do, that it's internally consistent. Again, whatever the rules are, are fine. The only thing that this, that this has is consistency over a long, over a long period of time. Just, very often you'll address a problem that's idiosyncratic to a particular group at a particular time. And unless it's internally consistent, it can be something that becomes, you know, that goes out of style very quickly. And you just have to remember, if you're gonna establish a rule, then you ought to follow the rule and make sure that it's consistent with all the other rules. Again, it's, you, because all of the rules for regular operation are interconnected, you have to be careful when you change one as to addressing the impact that has on the others. So, just when, when, when we do this, when you, whatever suggestions you make, change, again, that's, the charter says you can do that. You sort of have to stress test it and say, okay, if this is what we're gonna do, what are we gonna do here, what are we gonna do here, what are we gonna do here? So that, so that the law of unintended consequences doesn't rear its overhead.
Thank you.
So, if I may, that, so that's the advantage of having something that's already been tried and tested. That's the...
Good. Further? And we'll take a vote.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington? Councilmember Forster Rothbart? Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right, motion number eighteen, that the common council authorizes the mayor to send a letter to the Greater Oneonta Historical Society in support of their application for funding for the William G. Pomeroy Foundation for the installation of an historic marker for the Little Red Caboose on city-owned property in Niwa Park, and further authorizes this historic marker to be installed on city property. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I've got Don, I've got Katie. Discussion?
There's a sign.
Yeah, it's not the same as the...
I think we've got about half a dozen of those historic markers now around town in the last couple of years.
They've really been putting a lot of work in with that.
Further discussion? And we'll take a vote.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Carson? Councilmember Harrington? Councilmember Forster Rothbart? Councilmember Matheson?
All right, motion number nineteen, that the common council authorizes the mayor to send a letter to the Greater Oneonta Historical Society in support of their application for a New York State Council of the Arts Capital Improvement Grant to help fund the restoration of their third-floor ballroom at one hundred and eighty-three Main Street.
So moved.
Followed by Elaine. And discussion? No discussion, we'll call a vote.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Absolutely.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forster Rothbart?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right, motion number twenty, that the common council approves the tentative agreement between the city and the Oneonta Professional Firefighters Local Two Four Zero Eight, International Association of Firefighters, I A F F, as discussed, for a successor collective bargaining agreement from January one, two thousand and twenty-four through December thirty-one, two thousand and twenty-seven, subject to ratification by the I A F F. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
I've got Katie. Do I have a second? I've got Lynn. And discussion of this? We'll take a vote.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo?
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh?
Aye.
Councilmember Lapari Shu?
Aye.
Councilmember Carson?
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington?
Yes.
Councilmember Forster Rothbart?
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson?
Yes.
All right, which takes us to item number twenty-one, not a motion, but we did promise the chief that we would come back to him today with some resolution to the outstanding questions that we still have relative to his salary request. So, I want to just open the discussion to anybody who would like to begin it. Yes, Lynn?
So, Brian, do you feel comfortable having it done in this forum? Or is there another forum?
Exactly, session.
I mean, I would have preferred it started there from the beginning, but I'm fine with it being in this forum. It's going for transparency. Transparency to who? So, I think we're down to your salary, right? The car, the vehicle, wasn't that?
I believe so, but I don't have formally given any clarification.
Yeah, I think, I think what we approved was the residency, correct? And then the car and the salary were still two items that needed to be, am I right?
So, the residency waiver was applied, so...
And then the car becomes a moot point.
That means that the chief can live anywhere. And the fact that we have a, currently, a view of use policy says a fire chief may have a take-home vehicle. That means he can take it home still.
That becomes a moot point.
So, I don't think it needs to be addressed.
So, it really comes down to the salary.
So...
Katie?
My understanding from the last meeting was that we were going to take a look at the entire administrative grid to get some understanding of the qualification of those salaries, where they're placed where they are in terms of grades, what they, like, the background for why we have applied them as they have been applied. We haven't done any of that yet, so I don't know. I don't know if this is just, like, we're sort of expecting to make, like, a yes or no decision, or because in my mind, I think that more, like, work needs to go into this than just yes or no.
And keep Brian fractionalized from the rest of them.
What do you mean?
Keep, uh, Brian fractionalized. He's literally standing by himself.
In what way?
It's like, sit here, he said.
So, how I received the information, or I perceived that information that was provided to us so far is that, given what all of the other department heads were presenting, Brian was put at a different rate than everyone else. And Craig explained his reasoning for that. And we're at the point now, whether we want to move forward on our own decision or not. I mean, Brian has given us an opportunity to, to understand that he will honorably serve the City of Oneonta residents in the next three years if we don't move on this. And if we do move on this, I forgot how many more years before we get...
I believe it was about two, if there's no way we went on, but it would be at, at least at twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
So, I agree with you that we should look at how those salaries were approached. Because we really didn't dive into that back in twenty-three, twenty-four, one of the salaries that came up. And so, one of the committees probably could take that on. I don't know if that's a budget issue or a finance issue. I'm not quite sure which committee should look at it. But I agree with you that we should globally look at those salaries, because there might be other department heads or folks that are within that administrative manual that, um, their positions and how they're compensated could be taken away.
Okay, can I just?
Scott?
If a committee's gonna look at it, I prefer the budget committee, because I'm a, I'm at a conflict if it goes to finance. And if that's gonna be the case, I'd rather take them off of finance and go on to a different committee if it's gonna end up in finance.
Well, to, to clarify, finance, we did look at it.
Right, I'm staying from it.
And we decided to move it forward, so, so right.
Oh, for this one, yeah, this one, yes. I meant what you, they were saying about the other, the whole stuff. Yes.
Okay, I misunderstood, too, that's...
Yeah, sorry.
This particular request, I don't want to kick it back to us.
So, so we're looking at two different things. We're looking at Brian specifically here, chief, I'm sorry, specifically here. And then we're also looking at a larger issue of, just like, I think it may very well wind up in the budget review committee.
Just to point, uh, clarity, Katie, were you requesting to evaluate city staff salaries? Is that what your suggestion was? In the context, were you looking at, I'm just trying to clarify what you were requesting?
Yeah, so, part of this reservation, uh, our city administrator to grant this request was that it's kind of in a silo, because, yeah, and so, I thought in the spirit of that, that, you know, because we did with all the other units, I mean, there was, like, a lot of information and things, and arguably, we spent the least amount of time on the administrative salary schedule. And so, yeah, in order to not do this in a vacuum, and, and kind of honor the, the request and also the city administrator's concerns, looking at it comprehensively felt like the most, I don't know, agreeable way forward.
So, to provide context for the request.
Right, right, yep, is to just look at, because there may be, there may be others that, you know, we could consider an adjustment one way or another, you know? Because the other thing that we have to consider is that we have to fund the request if we grant it, so...
Let me go to the chief.
I just want to be clear, I commend you, and I would ask that you strongly consider that, because there are others that approach me, and it is a much bigger issue than adjusting myself.
Mike?
I would just, I'm just thinking through this process. This is a process that seems like you could take some time to do it right. So, I would hope that we could agree that whatever salary changes that we eventually approved would be retroactive back to January first.
I like that idea.
You can't, you can't do that.
You can't do it, okay.
We do it for unions, though, clarifying question?
Going to bargain agreement, you can administer the staff, you can...
Gotcha. Okay, thank you.
So, how, how, um...
But wait, I'd like to get clarity from Brian on this, since we're doing this out in the public. You kind of told us that you wanted to get an answer. So, understanding how our funding system works, are you gonna be good with the budget committee working on this issue for the next couple of months?
I mean, I would like it resolved as soon as possible, but I'm willing to wait. As long as the end result gives us where I need to be and I don't want to upset anyone.
Yeah, so, just to Lynn's point, so rather than looking at your situation uniquely, we're talking about having a broader kind of conversation. And then, you know, your, you know, your salary winds up being something that is considered within the context of a larger, a larger bit of investigation? That, that, that works for you?
I mean, I'm confident enough in the numbers and the data that I showed you that if you guys objectively look at it, that you would pretty much come closer to what I was asking for, so...
So, what's the council's recommendation here?
Greg, didn't he say, I don't know, it was the one oh five? Just like median, single from... Didn't he say one oh five?
One, one oh five is where he's at now.
But isn't that, I felt that you'd reach a, that was the average, that role.
I can't recall the exact median number from the two thousand and twenty-three salary surveys that we, we did, we based it on. I'd have to look at it, it's good for me. That may have been what I said, I can't recall. Right, and so, that could be part of the discussion that the budget committee has, but I just don't want Brian walking away from this committee meeting, or this council meeting, you know, not happy in layman's terms that, that we're trying to shut this off. Like, if, if we're to the point where we need to come up with a number, I'm more than willing to talk about whatever that number is. I think the last time you and I talked, a couple of weeks ago, the delta was about eleven grand. And so, I just want to make sure that you're comfortable, if you are agreeing to this, or you want us to further talk about you tonight.
I mean, I would...
Point clear.
I'm sorry, go ahead. Chief and then Cecilia.
I mean, I would prefer it handled tonight. And then, any adjustment from there on in the future will be handled through whatever the budget committee determines forward discussion, but...
Cecilia?
So, the, the process, as I would understand it, would be that the request would then be sent to the budget committee, the budget committee would provide some kind of broader context, salary context, and then the recommendation would be made based upon that discussion and analysis, and then passed along back to council.
Back to council, yeah.
So...
The only...
Just a, a process, yes. A lengthy, potentially lengthy process, so...
It's potentially a lengthy process, and, and I'm not taking a position on this. I'm just stating that if we make a decision about the chief right now, and then there's a conversation around, you know, others that, that may, you know, be in a similar position, that may or may not, depending on the judgment and then was brought forward to the council, be advocated for an increase in salary. Or if the opposite goes and the council decides against an increase in salary, the chief is really kind of an outlier, and then you're playing catch-up. And, and it doesn't, there's a couple of scenarios in which that doesn't work. Yes.
The other concern is to go off of Katie's point, which is, I think it probably would behoove us to pass this to the budget committee, because we have questioned how to pay for this, these moving expenses.
Right.
If, if there is that.
Right.
Me, there is still the question open about where does this, where does this funding emerge from?
Sure, there's that too. And Mike, and then Dylan?
Uh, I mean, Moser Campoli and I had a good meeting with the chief in which we talked, looking at it from a budget perspective. And I became aware that there's a number of cost-saving measures that the fire department could do that, for a number of bureaucratic reasons, has not happened. And Tommy, Tommy Gomarchi, if I remember correctly, you felt that your salary increase was much significantly smaller than the amount of money predicted the fire department could save if those ideas were followed to, is that right?
Say that one more time.
Oh.
I think it's the, the false alarm, uh...
Yeah.
Find, or whatever that was, I'm not sure.
The nuisance alarm, or...
Nuisance alarm, thank you.
Because if we were building for that, and people were paying, alone, would it be more than covered?
Can I just ask a clarified question?
So, I, I, I just finished my comment. I don't think that the fire chief's salary should be tied to the fire department. I mean, of, of course, the grants give things that support the fire department budget, but not that the money has to come necessarily from there. I just, as we're thinking of, especially we're broadening this out, that, yes, I think the budget committee should look at it in context of also sometimes they're trying to save money for the other departments.
Before you hit your clarifying question, if you'd like.
Oh, it's literally... Oh, it's literally just like about one thing, okay, so, I thought we passed the nuisance alarm ordinance.
All right, go ahead, go ahead.
So, okay, I can put a pin in that.
Okay, Don.
Um, Mike has a slightly different, uh, way of looking at this, I think all departments need a number two, in case, you know, something happens and the chief isn't here anymore. And I had, uh, asked chief, I think, uh, two weeks ago, um, about the, uh, person, assistant chief, I think it's called, yeah. And you said, uh, you needed two more weeks of, uh, training to qualify as a chief.
There's one class left that I have to take.
Right, so I would urge you to take that class and be in a position, if the council decides to do whatever we do. Now, I think all departments should have a number two, can step in for whatever reason and fill the role. So, um, that, that's what I had to, had to say, you know, I think that, that is an important thing, that for overall management of the city, every department needs someone else who could step in to lead it.
That's a good point, um, go ahead, Len.
Agreed, succession is a good. Katie, I guess my point is that Brian's been at this for a while, I'm assuming he went to find finance a month or two ago.
It was like Thanksgiving, right?
Yeah, yeah. Okay, I believe he took some time, he talked with Greg, this might have went on for a month or two, I guess my point is that he's been at this for a while. And, um, if we are gonna change a, a number, yes, we can look at it globally with others that are probably in the same situation that you're in, there's probably two or three more that are in the same position. Again, I just want to make sure that, because you have done an outstanding job in your position.
Indeed.
Um, it wasn't just the fact that, uh, you know, your supporters came and supported you at the office council, I think this council has seen the difference. In management of the fire department since you've taken office and since Tim has joined on as assistant fire chief. So I just want to make sure that, that you're gonna be understanding, if this council goes down this path with the budget committee, because it could be months, and you've already been in months at this. And it seems to me that the delta is kind of small to hold you up, um, but that's, that's my one opinion.
So we're looking at three options here, right, um, as I understand it, as I see it, which is, one is, uh, to, to increase the chief's salary. The second is to not increase the chief's salary, both of those have obvious ramifications. The third, um, is, uh, to have it moved to the budget review committee for recommendation that, um, maybe has a little bit more of a holistic, uh, sort of an argument made for it. And, um, and so if we can kind of determine here for the chief's sake, um, which of these three routes we're gonna take. I think we'll have, you know, spent his time appropriately, go ahead, Scott.
I kind of look at it this way, why I want the budget committee to look at it, because I know what Brian has in his head, what if that committee determines that, dude, you're undercutting yourself, you really deserve a little bit more. Cause the, the other departments around us, this is what they're making, and we understand it, cause he has a love for the department, and he's doing it for the love of the department. So, I've known Brian as an individual, I'm sure he's probably backed it down from what some other places are truly what he wants, what he thinks he really should have, he backed it down, cause he's that type of team player. So that's why I kind of want the budget committee to look at it and be like, yeah, you know, you kind of, we understand where you're coming from, but really, actually, you should be up to here. Cause we need to think about succession too, cause what happens if our assistant chief, not putting words in your mouth, then decides he doesn't want to come to chief, he wants to stay where he's at. So we still have to have that draw to replace Brian, and, you know, when Brian decides it's all going to time for him to retire, I'm not rushing you to retire, man, I'll have ten years, I'm just saying. But, you know what I'm saying, so I think that's why we gotta have that budget committee really look at it, so that it's, you know, and I understand it, it can hold up for a couple of months, but. I don't want him to, just knowing him and who he is as an individual, you know, like, that's what I'm worried about, and that's why I kind of want them to look at it.
So.
I just wanna say, like, knowing, I don't know you that personally, but knowing about you, seeing you in the community, I agree that you're that type of person.
Right, sorry, go ahead, Tim.
So I would assume that he's probably been putting up with a lot for quite a bit of time, and this is just bubbling to us now, and he's been waiting since the end of last year. And so, so I would argue that, yes, this should go to budget, right, because there's more than just him who is experiencing, experiencing this issue. And then if budget deems that it's appropriate for him to get more, then of course we can give him more, we can choose to do that then. But I don't know that making him wait for an answer on eleven thousand dollars is appropriate, I feel like that's something that we can maybe discuss tonight.
Do you have an idea where we get the eleven thousand dollars to cover? I mean, I understand what he came up with, but I don't.
Yeah, that's exactly my question. Yeah, that's exactly my question.
Well, he has, and I, I recall, he had sent out an email that everybody with suggestions on how he felt that we can make back that eleven thousand.
All right, um, so let me, let me see if I can get a, a sense of council, um, wait for, for Katie, but, uh, just, those, that, um. There are these three options in front of us, right, um, those that are inclined to move this to review, and again, the chief has, has said, not to put words in your mouth, but what I heard. Was that it's not ideal, but you're okay with the budget review committee having at this for the length of time that it takes. I'm sure that they would prioritize this among the, the various things that they'd be looking at, I'm not putting words in your mouth, is that, am I, am I reading you right? So the chief nodded, yes, he's, he's okay, not thrilled, but, right, that's accurate, not thrilled, but okay with the process of the budget review committee taking this on as one of the pres, one of the premier items, um, on their agenda. So that said, we have, um, let me, let me, I can start with, with you, Don, where, where, yeah, cause that's the, the value of sitting at the end. Uh, where are you at with this, are you okay with moving this to the budget review committee?
Um.
Or you, would you prefer to go a different route?
Well, I, I would like to see a consensus, I could go either vote on it tonight, or we could go to budget.
Okay, so you're, you're in, you're in the middle on this too?
I could go either way.
Well, it's bold too, okay, bold, it can go to, but, or not necessarily him, but like, the idea, the concept that this can go to budget, it's right, but we can still vote on his stuff tonight.
I mean, what the.
Correct.
Yes, right, yes, yes, you're absolutely right.
I don't think it's one or the other.
I would prefer to see this as part of a comprehensive review, um, but knowing that that could take a long time, I think I would only be comfortable with that if we made a commitment to not have it be open-ended, but set ourselves a deadline. I don't know what the right deadline would be, three months from now, uh, which we would have reservations with the question.
And that's, I think that's pretty reasonable, um, there's three meetings of the budget review committee, that should be enough, I would think.
But I just wanted to ask the chief, because I can't read, I don't recall, I, I'm spending over a month now, what the sources for the amount would be, to, to cover the amount. What difference between the current salary and the, and the proposed salary?
Do you have that handy?
Collecting on the fire alarm organs.
Oh, right, okay.
We also have a contract in place with air methods for helicopter transports that we have not been collecting on yet.
Could you explain that last one?
Um, so helicopter transports, um, Fox Hospital does not have a helipad, so they have to land at the Fox Care Center. They're giving us three hundred dollars every single time we just go and, or they will give us three hundred dollars based on the contract, once we set everything up. To drive to the Fox Care Center, pick up their flight crew, take their flight crew back to Fox Hospital, while they package the patient, we package the patient, and then take them back to the helipad. There's additional money there to where we could potentially be charging specialty care, transport rates, have their municipalities do that. We have one thing, I mean, with our broker or our third-party billing company, where they were gonna check with their legal department and question what other municipalities are doing it. And when we talk about ALS specialty rate, that is the highest rate that we can charge, and it's twenty-two hundred dollars.
How much is that, did you?
We were, I think when I ran the data last year, we were at thirty calls, and I originally wrote that, and that's just thirty helicopter trips.
Right.
And when you take a helicopter trip, it's usually all, all of our specialty, and that's, that's the reason why they're, they're helicopters, because they're great.
So again, we're looking at, at the chief uniquely here, right, and not every department is gonna be able to find those same sort of, um, you know, cost savings or new, new funding streams. Just, again, so as you're looking at this holistically, on the one hand, you, so, this evening, we're talking about the chief uniquely, and so, you, we, we may have a conversation, you may have a conversation in the budget review committee. That, you know, it doesn't support an increase in salaries to various department heads who might be in a similar position, because there isn't that funding stream to be able to offset that. All of that, just for context. Yes, Don.
I, if I understand this, Greg, you were the one who made the decision on this initially, is that correct?
No, the council did, um, so we had a salary study that was done, third-party, uh, the Burt Group had done that, and we also had a NICOM salary study of cities throughout Upstate New York, or New York. We looked at that, yes, I, I had assigned various salaries to administrative group, uh, folks in the budget process that was then approved by the council. So, I just want to be clear, you know, the council has acted on this, granted, if you think there should be more discussion and consideration of other, uh, other angles, then that's, that's your purview.
But, did, did the chief come to you and ask for more money, and you said no?
Yes, when we assigned, we assigned the salaries, the chief had expressed his displeasure at that time.
So what was your rationale?
It was discussed at that time, and, and it was explained in the memos that I sent as well, which.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
It, it was a combination of the NICOM survey, the other survey we looked at, um, looking at equity within the organization, comparing one title to another, um, where they're at, and that's what we came up with. Um, at this point, I think we're at a different point in time, if you're gonna do a new salary study, it's, it's a new study, um, so I don't think it's even worth looking back at the twenty twenty-three numbers. Um, the chief has done more recent research on his position, uh, that I think the committee would need to do research on all the positions, you know, at current point in time, and. Come up with your own criteria as to what, uh, is a, you know, what factors you want to consider in setting salaries. Whether that includes, can a particular position or department raise certain revenues or not, and that's something that the committee has to discuss.
Thank you.
Among other factors, for instance.
Just clarification, is this the, the salary survey?
It looks like the NICOM survey.
That you, the NICOM survey, is that, that's what you guys, you, for the basis?
That's one of them, and there was a Burt Group that the city hired, did a, a study.
Yeah. Mary.
Yes, chief.
Just as a point of clarification, the numbers that I've used to present to you are old numbers from the salaries that we, um, I haven't done any new research in them. Obviously, based on the timeframe, the numbers that I presented you wouldn't be higher.
Mm-hmm.
Right, they're based on twenty twenty-three, correct?
Yeah.
Sorry, I thought I missed one.
Okay.
Um, I just wanted to ask a practical question with regard to, like, how we would implement, um, working with assistant enforcement of those two fee collections. Cause you were saying that, like, we have these things in place, but they're not being, like, the fees aren't being collected, so how do we, like, how do we go about that in order to, um, actually raise the revenue?
So, is the helicopter transport review in the finance department, you will find that required for a moment, and the maintenance view would probably be for, uh, city attorney.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
So we're still going around the room, or?
Yeah, yes, I'm sorry, yeah, I'd stopped it, Mike, and then move on to Scott, but Scott's, Scott, have you changed your mind about moving Mr. Finance, uh, rather to, um, the budget and review directly?
Oh, I'm just sorry, I missed that part. Okay.
No, I.
Thank you.
I think you better skip me for a minute, I'm biting my tongue on something, it's just sad that I.
Okay, all right, so, that's, that's fine, um, we'll come back, just wait.
Honestly, I'd like to have it handled tonight.
Okay. And Katie?
Um. Yeah, I mean, I think that, again, like, I want to make sure that I make the most informed decision, you know, Scott said, and I agree, or maybe Len said, somebody over there said, and I agree that I think he's been doing an excellent job. And it's not based solely on that, because, like, um, like, based on my experience, I'd be like, yeah, totally, he's worth it, you know. Um, but I think that just understanding why we're making the decision fully, um, that's how I like to roll, as far as guys know. On many other occasions, so, that's what I think, I would like to see it go to budget, Katie, yeah.
All, all right, uh, Shannon.
I already said my piece.
So you're saying you'd rather do it tonight?
I'm saying that, yes, it can go to budget, you know, in some form or fashion, but that, this is something that I wouldn't mind moving on tonight.
Make, make the decision. Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm. All right, Cecilia.
I'm really two minds, because on the one hand, I would like to see an updated salary study, uh, that is comprehensive and detailed, um, and accurate.
Mm-hmm.
And draws this comparison to other municipalities, um, so that we have a broader context.
Mm-hmm.
On the other hand, um, the difference here that we're looking at, the proposals for making up that difference seem fairly reasonable. Um, so I, I think I'm following, I'm more along the lines of Shannon here, that, that, uh, having this go to committee would be, um, I would be in support of that. I would also follow probably Len's argument that getting this tied up tonight would be advantageous for everybody.
All right, and then Mike.
Yeah, and I think I'm really, uh, feeling along the same, uh, realm, way of, you know, dealing with it tonight, but also looking at it on a, on the budget, um, review committee as a bigger picture item. I think the more we discuss it, uh, my concern with having this particular issue wait for a committee that has not yet even had its first meeting, um, concerns me, because I'm, you know, uh, we have not yet even set our process. The first first meeting, I don't know, you know, it's really gonna be focused on that, right, our process, getting our, you know, feet wet with that, you know, how we're gonna, um, be operating. And I, I feel like that would just continue to delay this request, um, my concern of, you know, was making sure that, you know, we have a way that we're balancing that out. And it does sound like we have, um, potentials for that here.
Okay.
Well, since you gotta come back to me.
Yeah, thank you.
So, here's my holdup, and this isn't what, why I asked you to skip me, this is, I understand the funny sources, but those funny, funny sources that we're using can dry up. What happens when they dry up, if we don't do it, if the contract changes, we don't get the money, if we decide we're not gonna charge anymore for the false alarms, if we're gonna, whatever. Those are funding sources that aren't guaranteed, what do we do then, how, how do we sustain this, how are we gonna, how are we gonna get the money, how are we gonna? And that's the, that's where my holdup is, is we just went through this budget process where we were all screaming at each other not too long ago. About money and how are we gonna do things, and how are we, and here we are, and now we're gonna sit there and say, well, you know, we just had three, the three hundred thousand we're gonna give, we just gave out three police officers' positions. So we, we haven't really gained anywhere, we haven't gotten further ahead yet, how are we going to do this? And I haven't heard anybody ask, I guess, the question of is, if these funding sources don't pan out, how are we going to do this? How are we gonna, what, where are we gonna take the money from to sustain this, and this is just this year, this has a trickle effect. Now, what's next year, what's the year after, what's the year after, as we do this? I mean, it's not just right here and now that we gotta think about it, it's two years down the line, three years down the line, four years down the line, and that's my holdup right now, it's not that I don't want to give it to them. I, I do, and my holdup is, is how are we gonna sustain this, how are we going to do this, how are we gonna be fairer? You know, and then the second question is, now we just did this, now the next department head's gonna come, and the next department head's gonna come, and that's why I think.
Hang on, sorry, Shannon.
That's why I think when you open up Pandora's box, you gotta be very careful on how you do it, and that's just where I'm at right now, I don't know how to go down this time.
Shannon.
Oh, I'm gonna keep it to myself.
I think the other thing that I.
I think the other thing that I am not apprehensive about, but wondering is like, why aren't we collecting these fees now in order to gain this revenue? That could be, you know, I think if we were a few months into it and this revenue had been, you know, banked in some way or proven in some way, that might be, it might, for me, give a little bit more confidence that we would be able to sustain it. But it's not something we have done and I'm not sure why. And so that kind of leads me to hesitate, like what if we don't?
I don't need to say it again because Scott said it, I agree with you. But I think maybe, though I've been, I brought it up, that we don't need, that we should not think of these budget like saving measures, the fire department could gain some revenue tied to this at all. Because, and I hope that's the kind of thing that the budget committee will do, is we'll talk to different department heads and find out where things in the city aren't working and where they're, I mean, we don't, we can't just cut services. We have to find ways to advance, to get things done cheaper or to, you know. Sure, what I'm trying to say is, can we, let's, can we table that kind of discussion about the revenue for either send it to the budget committee or separate it from this discussion?
Sure, and I think, just if I may, I think that it's really commendable that, and I, this is part of, you know, why I was saying, why I think that you have been doing a really good job, and I told you this last time, is that like proactively, I think that you look for ways to make the department better, save money, look for efficiencies, things like that, like all the time. And I think it's a really good example of that, that you were like, well, I would like a raise and here's how I intend to pay for it. I think that's really commendable, so. And so before we table it totally, I want to say that.
Can I ask Jenny a question?
Yes.
So Jenny, this 11,000 dollars, I think is what, no, you've heard, is that true, 11,000 dollars? Or is it going to be more because of like retirement would have to be taken and the other legacy costs for that?
Thank you for asking that because I want to bring that up. I'm not a hundred percent sure, I remember the chief's request, but is the dollar that you requested from your memo, that also includes your longevity? So if it includes his longevity, what the salary increase would be, would be 9,700 dollars. Then if you put FICA and retirement on top of that, it's another 4,500 dollars. And that is just for 2025. So it would, it would basically be, you know, around between 13 and 14,000. We'll get the financial benefit sometime.
But.
Go ahead.
The chief didn't take a raise in 2024, is that correct?
No, no, the motion for, motion for the chief's 24 was retroactive upon the settlement of the fire contract.
Okay.
That, his retroactivity will also be included when I calculate fire contract retroactivity.
Okay, great.
Independent.
Wait a minute, now I need clarity, I just thought our city attorney said that we cannot do retroactive with administrative personnel.
You approve that motion before the work was done. You cannot do a retroactive after the work was performed. So the motion to approve the chief's salary was done before 2024 started. And it said that it would be retroactive upon the settlement of the contract. That is allowed because he had not performed the work yet. You cannot do a retroactive payment before the ministry or when the work was performed.
Can I ask a clarifying question?
I'm not going to jail on this one.
Yes.
No, you won't, I promise.
Yeah, Katie.
Because we haven't let you do it.
Could we do it starting tomorrow? I mean, could we say we are referring the administrative salary schedule to the budget committee with the expectation that salaries will be adjusted effective tomorrow? The eighth, because that work hasn't been performed. I know, I like this face right now. I think that's the best face I've ever made him meet.
The problem is if you, if you promise, if you say that you're going to do something retroactively, that what you're doing is you're essentially making a gift. Because you're saying you haven't done the work, but we're going to pay you anyway. And the time has passed, so it's never be like caught off. That's the problem, is part of the negotiation to a statutory authorization that it, because of collective bargaining, but for, but for any other purpose, you can't, you can't negotiate in the past.
I don't think I understand how that, because the chief isn't part of, even though it's tied to collective bargaining.
You can either pass it, or you can, you can say, if we discuss it later on, we decide that it's okay, then we can give it a gift retroactive.
So what he's saying is that the numbers have not been determined. So you have no idea what you're promising.
Gotcha, 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 gotcha. It would have to be, okay, okay. Okay, thank you, thank you so much.
Yes, Chief.
I learn every day.
I also, in good faith, was willing to take 4,000 dollars unless in that retroactive pay that helps up the cost for 2025. If you remember correctly from the.
You can't do that either. The motion has already been passed through 24, so we can't do it likely.
Okay, all right, so there are a couple of things in front of us here. One is, and I think it seems like eight people are agreed, that this will in some fashion, in terms of the department heads that are affected, go to the budget review committee. That might take a couple of months. You know, as you said, even that first meeting is all about process and determining how that's going to go. So that said, we can also vote tonight on whether or not, basically, it's an up or down. Do we have five votes that are approving of a boost in the salary to the chief or not? If we don't have the five votes in this moment, it could very well be that the budget committee and three budget review committee and three motions comes back and says, you know what, that raise that the chief wanted, that makes sense to us based on what we've now learned. So there are two things we can do. One, I think we're agreed on, that this is going to go to the budget review committee. And then the second piece is, do we have five votes here that are in the affirmative for a boost in the chief's salary as he's requested? If that does not happen, it still winds up being something that winds up in discussion within the budget review committee. It just winds up potentially, and it's no guarantee that it'll happen, but that winds up being a couple, three months down the road before you have any kind of resolution and advocacy from the budget review committee to the council. So those are the two things. One, I think we can agree, right, this is, nobody says that this should not go to the budget review committee. Generally speaking, this whole idea of let's take a look at what our salaries for our, you know, department head level staff might be, I think we're all agreed, right? Okay, so that piece is done. And then it's a quick question. Do we have five votes to raise the chief's salary in this moment? Again, knowing that even if that winds up failing chief, it still winds up being something that's part of discussion of the budget review committee. You're just looking at, no guarantee of it, but you're looking at a couple, three months down the road before we revisit this. So does that make sense, what I've just said there?
Yes.
Okay, yes, Katie?
Do we have a number in front of us that we are voting on?
Ryan, I'd like to offer you a bump in your salary of 8,500 dollars. I'm willing to make a motion on that if I can get somebody else to second it.
Eighty-five hundred?
Eighty-five hundred.
Well.
Now we're open for discussion, so.
Hang on, who was the second?
No, it was Elaine.
All I heard was all seconded.
This is your legislative experience, show yourself.
Does that base salary?
Yeah, it's a bump. We listened to what Jenny said earlier, it's not as longevity, that's a separate item, it gets added in. She gave a number of 9,700 dollars, correct, is that what she said?
To me, Brian's your question.
And I've offered 8,500 dollars, you guys can take it up, take it down.
Why, just curious, why, why that number, not the 9,700?
I don't know, because every time I've ever negotiated, both sides have to feel a little bit of a pain on this.
All right, so discussion?
I go back to how are we going to fund it?
I think that's a great question, and I really do. I honestly believe that's a great question that you and I have talked out, like globally for everything. And Jenny has brought great charts and we see the delta is 1.8 million. And so that's, that's what we got to go looking at. I mean, yes, we're going to look at salaries comprehensively, but overall, 8,500 dollars compared to 1.8 million dollars. And then in '26, thankfully for Judy, wherever she is, she lowered that number dramatically for us, thank you. Because in '26, that number's gotten lower, so that's good stuff.
Additional discussion?
Yeah, Jenny, where are we going to pull the money from?
That's a real question. Thank you. I have a thought, I was just wanting to get the money from, for this particular discussion. So in your motion, I would say, at right now, we would go to fund balance. I'm not willing, you cannot increase any revenue budgets until the city exceeds the revenue budget. Except for certain items, such insurance recoveries or unexpected grant, anything like that. So you cannot increase another revenue code. Because you've got to meet that budget that you adopted before you can increase it. So if, if there is a code in the 2025 fire budget that Brian is willing to reduce to cover the additional costs of the salary, I don't know if he's, if he's offered that in the 2017. But as of right now, it's too early in the year for me to say, will we potentially have any targets to meet your citizens?
Lynn?
I hate tying his salary to his budget. I just think that's unfair, but I'm going to just say that Brian could easily find 10,000 dollars in expenses that he didn't expend in the '24 budget, in his own budget. I'm sure he didn't spend all of your money on every single one. So he has the money, it's in an expense line. And Jenny will find it by the end of March, because that's how long it takes her to recapture all those expenses. She'll give us a report in March that shows all that. Because every department head is very frugal and I know that they don't spend it all, so.
To follow, I'm sorry, can I just say one thing? So if the 8,500 dollars salary increase will result in, you're needing 12,000 dollars because of FICA? Just so you know, we know what number we want.
Like Cecilia?
Well, to follow up on Scott's point about, it's not just about this year, it's also about these, exactly, continuing years. So to reiterate Scott's question, what about these sustaining years, not just 2025, 2026?
Further discussion? Mike?
And Len, I feel like your heart is in the right place as far as doing right for the chief, but I feel like that it feels arbitrary to me. And so I would vote against it. Not, nothing to do with the chief, it has to do with procedure. And I would feel more comfortable looking at it more comprehensively.
I would echo that.
Further discussion? Let's take a little.
Councilmember Moser Campoli?
Oh, I'm.
Could you just reiterate the motion? We're voting on the raise.
That's correct.
Increase to the base pay of 8,500 dollars.
Thank you so much. And the motion is only 8,500?
That's correct.
It's actually 12,000.
The salary.
Base pay.
Right, and everything else will come with it.
Under the understanding that that's 8,500 dollars, 12,000, not 11,000? Because the delta is 11, right?
Well, he's talking about salaries and the rest of the benefits are the additional that aren't, you know, that are kind of.
His base pay increases 8,500.
Exactly, so.
The motion included time period for this? It was just for the.
It was a boost, sorry.
Yeah.
Right, correct.
I don't know about the path that Jenny talked about, so I'm not willing to talk about going backwards.
Right, so this is a.
I've never, I'm not familiar with that, so.
So the motion is for.
Eighty-five hundred dollar.
To base.
Salary.
It's a base, and it's base salary.
Effective tomorrow.
Effective for 2025. Because I honestly don't know how retroactive administratively, like.
Effective 1A.
Effective 1A. Because again, I, it might be possible, but I just, I'm not familiar with that at all.
All right, so again, 8,500 dollar salary line is what we're talking about. One eight would be the effective date, Katie?
Could we just have carry redemption, please?
Yep, it would be a bump in the base pay, affect, 8,500 dollars, effective tomorrow's date.
Okay, thank you.
Cecilia?
And the source we're not being clear about, we don't need to be clear about.
That's not in the motion.
So from the fund balance?
That's with Jenny representatives.
You will need to modify that motion to have legitimate revenue to be funded.
Right. And authorizes any necessary transfers or whatever?
Well, it's going to, you're going to have to instruct me where you want the money to come from. Either Brian reduces his budget somewhere else on a different line, or we go to fund balance, so.
To do a family amendment to.
Yeah, friendly amendment. Come from fund balance, yeah.
Yeah, I propose that.
I would agree with that.
Okay, so who's making this friendly amendment?
I'll make the friendly, oh, bullshit, give it up.
I can do it already, I guess.
All right, so, and Elaine is seconded that, so would you read the entire motion?
So we're directing the director of finance to make any necessary budget transfers from fund balance?
Yes.
Does that.
You can just say to approve a budget of limit, increasing 8.3410.1, and increasing appropriate fund balance for the salary related fringe funding costs.
Yeah, my motion's what she said. That makes me sound intelligent.
We all know it's Jenny.
All right, so we have that.
So we're increasing base pay 8,500 dollars, effective 1A, and we're authorizing necessary budget transfers and amendments from fund balance, budget 8. It sounds much more eloquent when I write it, I promise. 83410.1, appropriated fund balance salary and fringe funding costs.
So that was advanced by Scott and then seconded by Elaine?
And it's only friendly if everybody agrees.
Does everybody agree?
Sure.
Okay, everybody agrees, that's what makes it friendly, and.
Okay, good.
All right.
I didn't do it, I did it.
We had a good time.
Okay, so, so now we have.
I know, we got a motion and a second on the friendly, yeah. Everybody still agrees, we're happy.
Okay, and now. And now unless there is further discussion.
We're going back to the original motion.
Which is 8,500 dollar salary boost.
Yep, effective 1A.
Effective 1A.
Motioned by council member Carson, seconded by council member Moser Campoli.
So if you would call a vote, please.
Councilmember Moser Campoli.
Aye.
Councilmember Walshuso.
Aye.
Councilmember McHugh.
Aye.
Councilmember Lepari Shu.
No.
Councilmember Carson.
Yes.
Councilmember Harrington.
Uh, no.
Councilmember Forrester Rothbart.
No.
Councilmember Matheson.
No.
You have a tie vote.
Lord, and I am going to vote actually in favor of the chief's salary boost. And we'll see what comes of the discussion in the budget review committee.
Motion passes.
I think this is the first time you got to do that.
No, seconded. Usually, usually Len is sane, so I don't have the option. All right.
We'll discuss that in legislative committee, too.
All right, in good conscience, I cannot bring, even though we are looking at only a half hour discussion of these various topics that I want to bring forward around development in our city, this is not a time for me to even begin that conversation. So I'd like you all to take the material that was provided to you and we'll be that much more informed on the 21st and we'll have that conversation. This is a council-generated conversation, council-generated discussion, which is going to put the things in front of you that we feel are necessary to have that discussion. So we'll bypass that. Do we have any additional business or council consideration?
Yes, and sorry I didn't get in touch with everyone before this, but I wanted to bring forward a motion, something that you talked about at length last.
at length last year, um, in the Charter Review Committee, which is to delegate the hiring authority for budgeted vacant positions to the city administrators, they do not have to go through the committee, common council approval process. Um, this motion has been lovingly crafted by our, our, um, city attorney at my request. And, uh, what I like about it is that, um, these three bullets, I think, are pretty comprehensive in terms of the application of this. Um, and I would like to see us pass this this year so that we can be more nimble in hiring budgeted positions, um, or for budgeted vacancies. Um, but I think also there's a certain amount of efficiency to that, that benefits all of us. Um, and they, what I love about this is that there's a, like, an information sharing requirement, uh, with regard to keeping council apprised on new hires, um, as soon as possible, so I would like to so move this motion, please.
Um, do you wanna read this, do you wanna read this aloud?
Oh, do I have to read that? Okay. Motion, whereas the efficient operation of city government requires that budgeted vacant positions be filled in a timely manner. And whereas requiring individual, requiring individual council approval for each hire can result in unnecessary delays that may impact the delivery of services to the public. Now therefore be it resolved that the city council of the city voting on to hereby delegate to city administrator. The authority to hire individuals to fill budgeted and vacant positions within the city workforce, provided that one, it's in compliance with the budget, the position to be filled has been previously approved and funded in the adopted city budget for the current fiscal year. Two, notification to council that the city administrator shall probably notify the council of each hire made under this delegated authority, including the name of the appointee, the position filled and the salary offered, and three limitations on scope. This delegation of authority shall not extend to positions requiring council confirmation under state law, local law, or city charter.
Do I, do I have a second?
Oh, a later, yeah.
Uh, Elaine? Okay, and then discussion? Don?
Um, I'm not sure why we're doing this, because, uh, we have a tight budget and, um, taking the council wouldn't want to let all the positions fill.
They refunded them.
I was gonna say, this is for budgeted positions. So I, I personally, I jumped right to second it because I think that that would be a great way to, you know, reduce some of that, you know, red tape that we have in that hiring process, and I can just imagine as somebody who's seeking a position, you know, that that could be very daunting, um, to face that. And, um, you know, it, it seems like an extra level, you know, of, you know, that a lot of other, um, you know, jobs do not have. But I think that this would really help us move things along more efficiently. I mean, we've already budgeted for the position, we've identified it, we've, you know, budgeted it, it's, you know, um, I can't, yeah, I, I really support this. Thank you.
Scott?
Go ahead, Mike.
Is this by chance taking away authority from anybody, meaning council? Is this part of the charter? I haven't reviewed it, I mean, this is the first I'm seeing, so I'm just wondering if this has some effect, time taking power away from the elected
Well, that's, my question more generally is, what to, to, what does this alter or change from the existing process?
See, we
Which I think is related to these, to the question.
When we tried to do this in the legislative committee, we tried to do it as a charter change, we can't do it as a charter change because it's taking authority away from the council. Then we wanted to try to bring a policy in front of us and it's like you can't, policy can't supersede the charter. That's what this is doing here, superseding the charter, which we've already said, the council, the hiring is in, within the city, within, within the, within the charter. So
I don't know if you answered that, I'm talking ahead.
I, I do, cause I remember bringing this to you and I remember your answer co-heartedly, I'm gonna say
On this, on this particular question?
Yes, yep, and I double-checked your answer nine times, double-checked that at the time it was doing opposite charter. And they said, you have a very smart attorney, yes, that is transferring power away from your charter from you guys as a council. And you cannot do it, it has to go out to public referendum. So, that's why I'm gonna vote against this and I actually
Well, this, this maybe, this is why we knew that when you process, you had most motion.
Yep, because we, we did try to do this in legislative, those were the answers that we were given.
Well, it wasn't legislative.
Or I mean, the Charter Review Committee.
Thank you.
Sorry.
I don't wanna get tangled in this one. I don't like them to get Christmas cards in there.
Scott, when did, when was this reviewed?
This was last, when did we do that?
Twenty-two.
What did you recall?
Yeah.
Twenty-four?
Yeah, I have to be the chair, I mean, I wasn't very happy to be the chair, that was hard.
Twenty-three?
Twenty-three.
Yeah, cause we looked at a lot of stuff and that's how we actually changed the, some of the stuff to where you could sign some of the contracts.
Sure, I'm it.
Okay. So is there something you're thinking specifically in the charter then about the hiring?
Because as of right now, they have to come to us, cause we're, cause between the budgetary, cause we set the budget. And because the hiring has to come in front of us. Is, is the way, it's, it's the way it's, it's set here. And I don't, I don't have these appends back in my mind here.
Let, let me go to Katie while you're looking, Scott.
Yeah, I, so when I read the common council section of the charter, I see a lot of like fiduciary duty, but I don't see that we have the, I don't see that we have like the sole authority to extend an offer of employment to anyone other than the city administrator.
No, we're in C sixteen.
Okay, because then I also am looking at the administrator, C sixteen, and it says shall perform other such duties as required by this charter or other applicable law, or as directed by the common council and the mayor. So to me, this seems like we are maintaining our budgetary fiscal oversight and, uh, assigning another, other positions as assigned.
Yeah, and especially going back to
That's twenty-two.
The approval of the common council.
But this would be the approval of the common council.
Which, where are we looking?
Oh, okay, it's, um, sorry, uh, C sixteen, C three, it says shall appoint all employees of the city with the approval of the common council. But this would be approval of the common council.
I disagree with that, I don't think it would be giving him a blanket thing saying, oh, you get the, and it gets set, that was our big, that was our big big pull-up and that was the reason why.
Okay, that's not how I read it, but I appreciate your disagreement.
But we, we sign up because we, we can sit there at any time and say, no, we don't, we don't, we don't, we don't agree with your decision.
But we could defund the position.
I'm just saying in general, it may not be wanting to fund it, we may not agree with his, his opinion to hire that person, we have that authority.
I suppose that's true.
Yeah, we don't, we don't agree with that, we're, we, we don't want, we're not gonna go with that person.
I suppose, I suppose that's true.
Well, question, based on your experience, has the council in your time done that as opposed to just, you know, consent agenda proving?
We have, we have, yes, we have, we have had our time where we questioned somebody coming in front of us and we've had split votes on it.
On the basis of
For hiring?
For hiring.
The only thing I can think of is department heads, and I would be open to a friendly amendment that, uh, if, if department head budgeted vacant position would still require individual council approval, I think that's fine. In fact, I would favor that. Um, but I can't think of ever a time when like a water treatment plant operator has
We just did it not too long ago, we, we voted down his meetings were rejected.
Right, but was that an, an individual or was that the position?
Because it was budgeted, it was, it was a budgeted position.
What I mean
This was prior to this budget being passed, was it not?
Correct.
Yes.
Right, was it But was it based on, what, what I'm hearing you say is that it's based on the perception of this individual rather than the funding of the position?
No, it's overall, it's the position, it's the, it could be the individual.
So then at that point, wouldn't we review the budget and unfund the position?
Not necessarily, because we get six months into it, we have a, we, we know we're having issues and we can sit there and say, we don't want to put a higher reason, but we don't think that we wanna fund that position right then and there because we wanna take two, three weeks, you know, maybe a month of savings or two months savings and then we're gonna fill it later on.
We lose the candidate, which is what happened.
But, but we understand
Hey, desk worker.
But it happens and that's part, the hard part about being where we sit.
I guess so, and so what I'm saying is, I don't think that we need to take that role. I don't think that we need to, because if we have budgeted the position, we either unfund and then refund the position or we delegate the authority.
But we've also taken money from another position, sorry, we've also taken money from a position that we held open to move it to another department because we needed to get, that was more important at that time. This would actually take
We would do that in the budget, I'm sorry to cut you off.
No, no, we done it halfway through the year. We do it, we do it quite frequently halfway through the year.
We still could do it halfway through the year.
I, I disagree when you do this.
We would be moving the money, not approving the people. Sorry, we're going backwards.
This is why I should go through
Sorry.
Again, I'm new, so I don't know what's been done, but perhaps the council approval happened at the stage of the position being advertised?
Yeah.
Where, where so, that would delay the hiring, but the council could decide, yes, like approve whether the job's advertised, whether the, you know
I think that's a good idea, I don't know if the way that I wrote the motion
Elaine?
Yeah, I still had a point, because I, I do feel like if we have a budgeted position, that budget is our plan and that is our directive. And so I feel like whatever positions we're budgeting for, we, you know, that's, that's what we should be hiring for, you know. If there's an official freeze or changes, I think that needs to be made official. And not just, well, we're gonna hold off, you know, and see what happens. Because, I mean, just as we saw during our budget process, you know, if there's a position budgeted, the city is trying to hire for it. You know, unless we have given them another direction. So as long as it's a budgeted position, I, I feel like it is one we are trying to fill.
I, I'm just gonna jump in for a quick sec.
Yeah.
And I, I would really a- agree with you Elaine on this, that, uh, a budgeted position means that budget has been set aside for the position and then it's a case of what is the role of the city administrator? And the city administrator is essentially the chief operating officer of the city. And so is it not within that person's purview to be making a decision about hiring for a position that is already budgeted?
And I just, I just wanna add that I feel like our understanding, having an understanding that these positions that are budgeted are actively being sought to be filled unless there's an action from the council is important for us to understand because I think there was a moment during our budgeting, budget process where we were given a, um, a report and then two weeks later when some of the positions on that report had been filled, there was, there were accusations from council that staff had been lying or misleading to council, but those were budgeted positions, they were actively being worked on. So that is the kind of understanding that I think will just prevent, you know, further misunderstandings in the future.
I'm going back, back to, I think this, that we can't, can't pass this because of when we tried to do it underneath the Charter Review Committee. And I think we need more time to look at it and I think it should come up through a committee, not just be placed like this. This is a big change.
David, can you
I, here's, here's the specific language. Is the city administrator
David, what page?
Shall appoint all employees of the city with the approval of the common council. Now, does that mean that the common council can approve the city, mandate the city administrator to appoint, or does it mean it's subject to the approval of the common council?
That phrase finds itself multiple times in the chart.
Within that subject to?
Well, a- again, it's, 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 shall appoint all employees, the city administrator shall appoint all employees in the city with the approval of the county council. Does that mean that the common council approves? You know, i- is really the one who hires them? Otherwise, the city, city administrator wouldn't have any real purpose.
Right.
If, if, if he, if the common council is who really appoints people, then the city administrator doesn't have any power at all.
Right.
So it's a, it's a, it, it is a, is a, an interesting turn, turn of phrase, which is
But it does, it does appear multiple times, uh, because it's same confusion every single time Elaine.
It's a famous phrase, so it's, it's, it's a conundrum.
It is.
No, I'm just, I guess I'm just looking at that phrase too and wondering, you know, like, would this suffice as that approval? Because it doesn't say that, you know, we need to approve each, um, candidate. It says with the approval, you know, shall appoint, you know, employees with the approval, you know, so I'm wondering if that will suffice for us.
And this, I suppose, could be tested approval for a process
Yeah, exactly, like this is our approval or
From that kind of
Yes. The process. Yeah.
Dave's, yes, Don, let me, let me go to Don.
I think if we approve this motion, we're delegating the responsibility, which I don't think is a good idea to the council. We're giving away our authority.
No.
I don't think we should do that.
We are the only, oh, sorry, so sorry.
Hang on a second. Alright, Katie?
We're the only ones with the authority to create a position, to fund a position. We are just giving away the responsibility of naming an individual to that position.
And to what purpose?
Because it's less numbers, yeah.
Efficient, I mean
Yeah, yeah.
The hiring process.
That's what I'm thinking, like, I, I don't know, but there's a potential of savings, right? There's less time that's going back and forth, you know, in process. But also the efficiency of, they don't have to wait two plus weeks for the next common council meeting for a position to be filled. You know, like if there's an opening on Department of Public Works or, you know, wherever it is, they don't have to, you know, it would cut down on that time that they're waiting for positions to be filled. And then we'd be providing better services to the city ultimately.
Right, Scott?
So, I just looked at some, some of my notes back from the thing, cause I'm the one that brought up streamlining hiring process
Yes.
To try to do this. And this is where we felt that we couldn't do it because of the language in the charter. And Dave's opinion, when he gave it to us, I said at that time, he said, you're giving power away, you can't do it. And I commed agreed with what Dave said. You can't give your power away, that has to be voted by the public. This, this, in my eyes, is giving power away. You are now, cause it says with common council, or whatever he just said, how he phrased it in there. So that's, that's how this all, cause we were getting ready to do this and then we couldn't do it, then we're gonna try to do a policy and the policy, you can't supersede the charter. This policy's gonna try to supersede the charter, which, you know, says we do this.
What was
Yeah.
I mean, you can't do that, so
David?
If you wanna try this, I would put a friendly amendment in there that says, with the exception of hiring of department heads.
Right, and they're listed in the administrative manual, there's like a whole thing, and also on the quarterly staffing report we get, there's like reports to city administrators. So there's a clear, cause I think that was one thing on the Charter Review Committee that we referred it to, was like, what's department head? But I think if we can always define them as the directly subordinate uh, employees of the city to the city administrator, then it's pretty basic. And it's always, every year, it's in the administrative manual, so I think you, I'm, I would love that friendly amendment and I would second it, even though that's not necessary.
So, yes.
Can we send this, uh, motion to a county committee to discuss it and up into a court?
We could, but I believe Scott was in the process of potentially putting a, throwing a friendly amendment into this, were you not? Not the, not the
Sure.
It's, you can only make a motion within a motion.
Friendly amendment to agree, still don't have to vote.
But I don't know if we should do the friendly amendment, I wanted to go back to
Then I, I
In that case, we're not gonna waste
And it's not friendly, it's hostile.
Yes, that's right.
Yeah, I'm making a motion to amend the
Alright, so, so Scott is making a motion to amend to
The mo- the main motion.
To the main motion.
He's making the The motion to amend the main motion.
With the specific language being
With the, with the exception of the department heads, it's still required county council.
Have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Katie. Does that show on the amendment to the motion?
I, I'd like, I'm sorry, go ahead. I'd like it to, I'd like it to specify that the department heads as listed annually
Oh, in the charter.
In the admin manual.
In the admin man.
The admin menu, okay.
Thank you, that's all.
So the amendment reading that
Like number four position that's listed as department heads in the admin manual.
Is the admin manual actually
Isn't it the admin manual?
No, it's the charter.
Is it the, is it the
The charter.
It's the admin manual.
Yeah, it's on the last page.
That, just, it lists department heads?
What's department heads?
Yeah.
Who are confidential
Oh, it does?
Yeah.
Supervisory
I need to read that back.
Ginny puts it in the budget.
Alright, alright, so we have, we have
I wanted to clarify that, sorry.
An amendment? Seconded by Katie.
Changed, clarified, I think.
Further discussion on that? None, vote?
So this vote is just on the motion to amend the original motion?
Okay.
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Moser Campoli.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo.
Aye.
Councilmember McQ.
Aye.
Councilmember Lepari Shu.
Absolutely.
Councilmember Carson.
No.
Councilmember Harrington.
Yes.
Councilmember Forrester Rothberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson.
Yes.
Okay, so, so now we have a motion, still, right?
Back to the main, main motion.
Back to the main motion, which has been amended.
As amended.
And do we have further discussion on the now amended motion? If not, we can call, call the vote.
Councilmember Moser Campoli.
Aye.
Councilmember Walsh Russo.
Aye.
Councilmember McQ.
Aye.
Councilmember Lepari Shu.
Thumbs up.
Councilmember Carson.
No.
Councilmember Harrington.
No.
Councilmember Forrester Rothberg.
Yes.
Councilmember Matheson.
No.
That's five, okay, so that passes.
I can't count, I thought it was four again.
That was.
That's all I was saying. He gets a vote again.
So, so that, that passes. Do we have any other additional business or anything for council consideration?
I can go last, actually.
No, no, go, you, you actually reached your hand before.
Well, I, I just wanted to say, this isn't really additional business, I just wanted to, there's nobody here anymore. I wanted to mention the city of New Orleans, if we could just keep that city in our thoughts. Because they had a horrible, tragic, awful event, a terrorist attack. And the city's been through a lot, and so this is just one more tragic circumstance that they're dealing with, so.
Reed, Lynn?
Yeah, that was great to bring up. I was there just a few years ago, and I think after we left, less than a week later, that hotel that was on, on St. Street with the scaffolding collapsed. So.
Yeah, they've been doing.
Anyways, um, with Brian here, it makes me think of real estate. Are we going to take that discussion?
What?
Are we gonna take the discussion of selling real estate, city-owned real estate, that the housing commission's been working on?
Mm-hmm.
Are we gonna discuss that at the council level or are we going to move that off to another committee? Meaning so before the housing, the housing commission is making a recommendation, we're gonna have our meeting tomorrow.
Yeah.
I just want to be prepared to where we're, we're going with this.
You know what, um, see what the, what the council thinks of it, but I, I typically, what we like to see, what we've been asking for in fact, is that the various commissions bring forward to council their recommendations. And that then will generate the discussion within council, maybe at that point, it'll be clear to us that it needs to go to a committee for, you know, additional tweaking. But I would say it comes to council as, as a presentation or a recommendation.
Okay, I, okay, I just like if you want to do it individually as a parcel or you want to do it globally because we own.
I think we need to hear the presentation and, and the recommendations. As a, as a, as a council, to, to be clear about that.
Perfect, I'll, I'll tell them that they should be ready to come to the council meeting.
When they're ready. When they're ready.
Hmm.
And, I mean, let me know, so we don't have a four-hour council meeting, but yes, yes, let's bring them to council. No, no, you see what happens when you think it's at the end. Uh, anything else for, yes, Don?
Um, Corey Rowe, who owns, uh, Doshia, the cannabis store, sent everybody, I think, a long letter, did, did, see it, I think?
Yep, we all got it.
Anyway, my, my point is that, um, he says there are four brick and mortar stores selling, uh, illegal, illegally selling cannabis products and his one illegal delivery service. And, um, I don't know what the council can't do about these things, but, um, I think the police department should look into it. And he sent a list of the, the businesses that he alleges are selling the illegal substances. He told me that, uh, one of them, he's, he witnessed that, uh, they sold it to like teens, young teens. So is there anything we should be doing about this?
Encourage him to make a report to the police, probably, if he's.
I think he has.
He keeps speaking, how we fight.
No, I don't know if he's.
No, no, I know, we want to hear from.
Isn't there a state, state agency that takes the lead on that?
Yes.
I don't know what the state agency's name is, but I'm sure.
Cannabis management.
Yeah, you should send it to them.
Is it cannabis management?
Yeah.
Yeah. It was Andy that had sent a response that said, well, we're not in the city.
Uh, two of the four are in the town.
Okay.
They would typically, I mean.
It's not a registered business.
But, let's, let's.
One of the issues is they're selling nicotine products, it's not that they're selling cannabis products.
Oh, sorry.
I have no other information other than what you sent us.
Yes.
That was among the mail, the city businesses.
Okay.
So I, um, I, uh, I wrote to Chief Wittenberg about this. Um, because one of them is very close to my ward, um, and has been, I'll say this publicly, kind of a nuisance since they opened. And I said, you know, what's going on with this, can you give me more contacts? And he wrote back to me, I'm not prepared to read that publicly, but I will, I can email it to everyone, um, if you're interested in, in what's been going on there.
I appreciate it, because I'd like more context.
Yeah.
So that sounds like a good resolution in this moment, if you would email that to everybody, please include me.
Yeah, sure, yeah, I'm gonna do a read now, so I don't forget.
All right, and, and I think, Mike, you have something?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, you.
Oh, wait, do you want my?
Books?
Do you want my?
Don?
I didn't hear exactly what.
Kate's gonna email response from Chief Wittenberg to all council and committee. Was, Mike, did you have something?
Thank you.
Um, there's one thing that I, I told my ward that I would bring up in my first meeting, and so this is my chance. Um, I want us to look at ways to improve the live stream, to improve transparency, including helping with audio and video. Um, and generating a transcript of our meetings, and I have some specific, other specific ideas, but I'm not sure particularly what the best way to do it is. That's not something I don't think that really requires council, a council motion, it just requires some administrative stuff, so.
So, I'd be out of line if, I would suggest that maybe you sit down with Carrie to talk about what we have done, what we're trying to do, what our impediments are. And then we may be able to bring forward a strategy, you know, with that information.
Okay, we'll do it, so I will be with her and bring it back to the council.
Is there anyone else who has anything for a council consideration or discussion, or any other motion?
Can I say two quick things? May I? Okay, um, one is, uh, speaking of charter reviews, we had a fire in my ward on Christmas night, technically Boxing Day. Um, and I just wanted to say thank you to Chief Knapp and O F D and all of that, and D P W and the coordinating departments. Um, for, you know, getting up there, putting it out, there were no injuries, no critical injuries sustained, including the pets got out, so, um, that was great. Thank you very much, um, I envy what you do while I was like at home after Christmas, you know, asleep in my bed. And, you know, we were out, you know, really, really rescuing people, um, and making sure that everyone's okay, so I appreciate that very much. And then also additionally, the, um, communication afterward, where I had reached out and said, you know, do you have any additional details? Chief Knapp called me like right away, I can take his call and I'm sorry to get back to you, but then you sent the email that was very descriptive to everyone. Um, and so I felt like we were all really kept in the loop about that, so I appreciate that as well. Um, oh, I was, I don't remember the second thing. Second thing is I'm having my monthly coffee on the eighteenth, which I think is before the next meeting, so I'm gonna say it now. Um, Saturday morning, I think it's the eighteenth, at nine AM, I get fresh on the main. Um, and everyone's invited because it's a city thing, but, you know, it's really, it's to get people out and talking. So I'll be there, coffee in hand, thank you. Nine AM.
You're back.
Depends on how many people show up. And how nice everyone is to meet that early in the morning. Just kidding.
All right.
Get fresh.
Get fresh.
Get fresh on Main. Delicious breakfast.
Is there, is there?
Nine AM, yes.
Is there any?
Morning welcome.
Is there anyone else who has anything for council consideration or discussion? Uh, this, this is the loaded question, is there any need for an executive?
I'd like to move that we go into executive session to discuss, um, specific employees' performance.
Oh, wait, are you serious?
Yeah, no, we're.
Who are you voting, voting in?
Uh, just the council, please. Yeah, use the, use the bathroom, it's a short, it'll take a few minutes.